We'll call the order. We did the pledge of allegiance. Uh, roll call.
Andreas.
Here.
Roosevelt.
Here.
Woods.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay.
You have a form, sir.
All right, uh, consent agenda. Everybody has a copy of that. Do we have a motion?
Yeah, make a motion.
A second?
A second.
On paper?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, it closed? Good. It's done. Uh, citizens' opportunity for comment, public comment reminder. Citizens have, uh, the opportunity to address the council on items not on the agenda. The agenda item is set aside for comments from the public on topics of city business other than those listed on the agenda. Please understand that the council will not take action on your comments at this meeting in accordance with Iowa's open meetings law. The mayor and the city council welcome comments from the public pursuant to the adopted rules and of the proceed, rules of procedure of the Almond City Council. At no time is it appropriate to use profane, obscene, slanderous language. The mayor may limit each speaker to five minutes. Is there anybody here that would like to adjust the council?
Yeah.
Step right up through. Your name and address?
I got it. Uh, Bob Schramm.
Okay.
Two fifty northeast one hundred and forty first place.
Okay.
Uh, I have a question about board of adjustment. I had a, I was supposed to attend a meeting of board adjustments for my, trying to get a variance on my building there, and I was given the wrong date, so I, I didn't show up for it. Anyway, it was denied. And pretty much the main reason, from what I understand, was that the board of adjustments didn't feel they had the power to render a judgment on a commercial property. Is that kinda, no?
No.
That wasn't it?
No. No, it's, it, you were looking for, uh, a, a variance on use, and we can't grant variance on use. This is, that, pub governing body is strictly for code, uh, as far as setbacks and easements and, and things of that nature.
Excuse me. You sure about that?
That's the way I was instructed.
Could we check with the city attorney and see if that is actually the case?
Sit right there. So what's that, what's it zone now?
Commercial.
Here, here's the way it was presented to me from the, uh, the, the first line from D K was that because it was a question of improper use, that that was full stop. There were, there was no further looking at your building plan, your site plan, or, or, or as far as anything goes, as far as the, the setbacks and easements and all of that jazz, it comes to a full stop. And at that point, because it didn't meet use requirements, the board of adjustments has no authority to rule. So what, what's the improper use? Because I don't...
I, I wanted to, I wanted to just build a building next to mine to store stuff in, in its own commercial, and it has to be a business. It can't be just a building for me to store stuff in.
So are you running the business out of the main building? Do you have plans or anything, or how big is the building, or?
As big as I, like, yeah, I've got a, I've got a contractor. Uh, it's gonna try to go twenty-five by forty, as wide as I can go, and because there's gonna be variance from the power lines and from the existing building. And I was, I was, I would've gone with adding on to the existing building too, whichever was easier or whichever would work for anybody.
Do you have plans or anything drawn up or showed dimensions for property land or anything?
My contractor does.
Oh, does he?
Yeah. Yeah, he talked to Jason about it, and Jason flipped a car. Absolutely no way in hell you can have something there that isn't a business, because it's uncommercial. So I thought that's what the board adjustment was for, was to give an easement for a situation like that.
Yeah, a little business move, yeah. Yeah. It's more like a zoning issue, but it's commercial. B and Z, it has to be changed immediately.
So, it went to planning and zoning.
Okay.
And we held a meeting regarding it, and they discussed, because it was commercial and we had our comp plan, um, then it would be a spot zoning issue, um, if we would change it or attempt to change it or whatever, and because of the comp plan and everything that it has to do with all that, um, that it wasn't feasible, and that we pulled in the next step, so we denied it, so we told them the next step would be, uh, I records.
Yeah, because it's, I mean, it's right out there, so it's a commercial.
It's a commercial, and the comp plan shows that it's commercial, but, yep.
And I didn't really want it changed for a commercial. I just wanted, you know, you guys say, well, okay, we'll make an adjustment for that. You know, an easement, that's what I thought easements and adjustments were all about, was to make an exception for something like that. I, obviously, it was wrong, but...
So are you just using the building for storage, or what's?
Yeah, well, the guy that had it before me had, had a shop in there that worked on his old cars in for twenty years. He died. I bought it, and I had no idea. I knew it was so commercial, but commercial, all commercial meant to me was, was a residential. I knew what was going on there when I bought it. The guy was in there working on his old cars. They had a shop in there. So I didn't know any different until I decided that. So I guess I grandfathered in on that. They're not gonna force me out. But when I decided I, I needed some room, that's when this came up.
So you worked on our cars, or what are you doing?
Yeah, yeah, cars, motorcycles. I retired.
Okay, so it's just your own outside of business?
Yeah, no. And I, I asked, we asked Jason if I could build this new building, if it could be a business. He said, oh, yeah, but you gotta put in septic system, have it handicap accessible, have parking, and this, and that, and this, and that, and, you know, just a nightmare.
Okay, well, I can talk to Jason. I have, in that mall, sounds like they could use a warrant.
So the board of adjustments can't make an adjustment on a commercial property?
I, I have to defer.
I mean, is there some legal standing somewhere that states that?
So if it's a commercial property, then you're not using it for commercial use?
But that's why I asked for variance.
Right. Yeah, I'll be talking to Jason. You will, you will talk to Jason and then get him an answer?
Okay.
Okay, the next step? Okay, um, Jason. Anything you, uh, okay, we got, yeah, we get that all.
Yeah, that's fine. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Superintendent just walked in. You got anything you wanna talk to us about?
No, I'm just serious.
Here, here, look and listen.
Yeah.
Okay.
Taking, taking everything I can. I apologize for being late.
Oh, okay. Um, we'll close the, uh, the sys, uh, the, the, uh, I'll give it for the citizens to talk, and we'll go into our, our regular meeting, um, on action and discussion items. Uh, Doctor, or Lieutenant, right now?
Hello. Uh, let's see here. So for September, uh, it shows we have ninety-five calls for service, but fifty of those are concentrated controls over the schools, so about forty-five calls for service, uh, up here in the month of September. Pretty quiet. Haven't heard of any issues with the car club coming through.
No.
I think we got them in and out. Very quickly, quiet.
Is there just a guy?
They meet over at the school. They come in from Osceola, so they meet here, and then they go to Woodwood, I think. They're about two hundred cars.
Oh, wow, I didn't know about that.
This is their fourth year coming. I'll remind you next year.
Yeah.
We sit up there and watch them.
Make the motion accepted. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
On paper?
Aye.
Close? Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Have a good day. Uh, we got a public hearing on proposed plan specifications, uh, form of contract and estimate cost for the proposed street improvements. Uh, those will be up here now. Um, it'd be in the form of a resolution, correct? Uh, resolution twenty twenty-four days zero one eight. You have that in front of you. Uh, the resolution finally approving and confirming plan specifications, uh, from contract, form of contract and estimate of cost to the street improvement project. Um, first, we wanna get a motion, and then a, a second, and then we'll discuss. So do we have a motion? I'll make a motion. Do I have a second?
What's the motion for?
Discuss twenty-four. To discuss this resolution. We're gonna try to play Robert's Rule of Order here and do it right. Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, discussion. Um, it's your, uh, I can't really answer any of the questions, but you have Beast and Kim here, and Beast and Kim can, uh, answer any questions on this resolution and what's coming up.
What, what are we approving, or where are we, what's? What's it?
Well, just to move forward with what you got, is this a...
We took, we took a public hearing. Yeah, we took the bids. We took bids on the street improvement project for doing building and overlaying on the streets that are inherited. Um, basically, it's a, it's a two-part project, making use of the funds they have, because we have to have them committed. This was the easier set to get out, so we did that first. We're working on the other set for the drainage improvements. Those will get, and that comes up here in a little bit, but, um, bids that we received for different contractors, all bid bids, um, we actually had a little extra in there from a quantity standpoint, so actually, the, the bids that came in, that'll actually be reduced somewhere by fifteen or twenty thousand because of the paving that had already taken place, so...
So they've done some paving that you already had done?
Correct, yeah, yeah. It was in that contract, so we had it, but then it was, was paid out, or before that. Is there a reason why we don't have that kind of information in front of us?
The bids?
The bids and...
Yeah, the bids should be in here.
As long as the meeting came along.
Right here, right here.
Oh, right here.
Yeah, on the backside of that, that's the bid tab, so we have...
We don't have all the figures, documents themselves. We just have the tabulation.
Oh, is it the tabulation of the bids? Oh, yeah, that... Is there anything in there that stipulates that, uh, the city won't incur anything over a ten percent of the original bid, or is there any?
Well, it's, these are unit cost contracts, so as long as the units, quantities coming close to the quantities here, that's what you're gonna end up paying is what's on here. So I, I don't, I don't see it ever going beyond what you're gonna contract for, especially...
So there's no reason why it shouldn't say that in the contract, that the city wouldn't incur anything over a, a ten percent increase of the original bid? Because there's a lot of unforeseen things when you start digging in, in the draft.
With, with this one, you really won't get into it, because it's, it's milling the surface there and then bringing in asphalt overlaying back. The one that we're gonna have a letting on, that one's got the opportunity more to have unknown things.
Yeah.
To occur.
Underseen.
Yeah.
Yep.
I have a question. Uh, the recommendation was for inroads, uh, and it looks like they're, they came in, uh, at the lowest bid.
Correct.
Um, the, the bottom two are, you know, within a customer relatively close, but one thing that stands out right away is the very, uh, item that they're deceiving and fingrating. Inroads is considerably lower, notably lower than all of the other bids for that. Are, are they not prepared to do as much? What, how do you know what the scope of each of those items is?
You'll see, uh, different contractors will, will place money in different units, and that being the last item, what they're trying to do is they're trying to, so not load, but get more of their money in the early stages of the contract rather than in the later stages. Because even on the load bid at, at thirty-three hundred, you go to the high one and, and he's three times that, or at least double that amount, so you'll see some variation on different units. Um, and I agree, that, that one kinda jumped out at me as well, um, but I think they're probably just more trying to get more of that money upfront and, and not, it's not that they won't do it. We're working with inroads on a similar project right now in Grinnell, and they've done a fantastic job as far as coming back, doing all the restoration, the seeding, so I, I don't foresee a problem with that.
If we, if we've done the spec documents and the drawings all correctly, I mean, they have, they have to do what all those documents say. That's, that's the purpose for putting all that stuff together. Um, I see this all the time also, so...
And, and you also have to understand, before they would ever get all their payment, we're gonna be holding retainage on them. So in order for them to get that, they've got to finish out all the items on the contract as well as all the items on the bunch list.
What did we put that at, five percent?
Typically, five, so you're talking around nine thousand, a little over nine thousand dollars, which is way more than the value of what he's got in the seeding, so he, he's gonna want to finish that seeding up to get his, his retainage.
And this is just to proceed?
This, what you're acting on right now is approving the plans and the specs.
But we don't have the plans or the specs. All we have is a cost analysis of what they say they're gonna do.
Yeah, the plans and the specs were given to the city. They've had them on file, um...
Do you have those, Sheri?
I don't have that folder down.
I do.
You have?
I do.
You emailed the plans and specs to me?
Yeah, I mean, it is...
I think I've never seen that looked before.
It, I mean, it went through a whole process. It was these guys, and then Forrest, and then to Sheri and I, and then we checked it out. If there was any accident on oversight, send it back, adjust.
Perry, Perry obviously hasn't seen them, so, but I have.
That's why I've got questions.
Yeah, it should've been last one.
So is the resolution to have a hearing to approve it, or is the resolution to do it?
Just to move forward, I believe.
Yes. Move forward what? To do it?
Accepting the bid, yeah.
So if it's, so, so it's a resolution to do it?
It is?
We have a...
With no information?
Whole list of, of, you know, well, remember, we had the whole list of what we had to do each month to make this.
Well, I'm not questioning that at all. I, I, I've seen the information, but apparently not all of us have. That's my, I think that's gonna be the, that's gonna be the concern.
The more people that see it, the more, we're, more educated on what's happening, what's, uh, the procedure of the, the whole thing, and we might be able to catch up. I've been in construction all my life, so...
Well, I, one of the things that jumped out at me when I was going through the packet earlier, uh, this weekend, was, uh, the, it, it seems a little out of order in flipping over to the very first one on the back page of the agenda, sorry, cover sheet, cover sheet, where after we have these motions to approve moving forward and whatnot on approved, this street improvement project, here it's asking us to, uh, set a date for a public hearing on general obligation corporate purpose loan, uh, not to exceed eight hundred thousand dollars, which, uh, to me, if I remember correctly, there wasn't anything that we ever discussed on any of the, the proposed projects that was going to be eight hundred or less. It was going to be more. Um, so at some point, it seemed, something seems off or distorted about this as we move forward with tonight's agenda.
The agenda is how I received them from the Tiff attorney. And I agree, it does seem kind of like it's out of order, but that's how they came in from, um, Jimmy, what's it?
Dorsey.
Dorsey Whitney's attorneys.
Right, but my concern is we are going to be talking about authorizing a loan before we, we have no numbers.
Other than a hundred and eighty-four thousand.
Bingo. We're looking at a hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars and talking about borrowing eight hundred.
So next month, uh, we will have the bids from the storm water project, so those will be approved at the same time as the, and all of it's because we have to have something on books to start leaving Tiff by November.
Yes.
Otherwise, we, we start losing our Tiff revenues.
And that... What is that, a hundred, a hundred thousand, is that what that is? A hundred thousand a year?
Exactly. Hundred to two, yeah, I wasn't sure from that ad.
And we have to have that on the books, like a contract in place by?
November.
November first?
No.
Or by sometime in November?
Yes.
So if we push this to next, and then we know, and then we know...
We have both bids.
I'm simply asking a question, though. I'm not saying we should.
I see, I'm just...
You were shaking your head.
Well, don't look at, I mean, don't worry about me.
So if we, um, push it a little bit, we would have this bid and the other one?
Correct, that one will, uh, I mean, you approve the notices going up, and then we'll take bids. On November sixth, we'd be back on the eleventh, and you would, you would have both of them.
We have all of that stuff. Would you, so I know, in the Perry's point a little bit ago of not having seen the drawings, are the drawings ready, prepared for, uh, storm drainage?
We're about ninety percent done, and there's, they're gonna be wrapped up by middle of the week.
Would it, would it benefit just because, to present those to us at our next, our work session next week, and just so we all have a...
Well, I've lived in this town for thirty years. I know the bad spots where the water held. I went around during the storms. I've got pictures on my phone, and your guys came here one day on a dry day, and you did all your work. Yours, so...
Perry, that's why I'm asking the question, is, hey, we can, we can sit down and...
Run through.
Page turn, you know, and see, see all of those things, and then, then we can approve it all. I was surprised that it didn't all go out at once, just so we could see, but I understand this was easy.
It was a tiny work, yeah.
I get it, I get it. But if we, if we have that tide, maybe...
That would be good to have it next week.
I'm just throwing that out as...
So we can look at it. I don't, two days of getting infor, information, I'm a busy guy. I work most weekends, and, and I have very little time to even run through this. I've got, I was in Marleau today. I just barely got home, was able to run through this. It's, uh, we're, it seems like we're rushed on everything we do, and...
I also want to make sure with that, that we have, we do it in the right time, so you don't lose...
Yes, all right, yeah.
You know, so that's why, that's why I asked that question.
Sheri, and, uh, Jim, uh, will you, will you meet the, will the, the council meet the requirements for the, the public hearing timeframe with that?
I think so.
Because this one says public hearing on proposed.
So the, is there any potential... She'll have a public hearing tonight, so you're not missing anything as far as timings on the public hearing. What you're doing is, is I understand what you're proposing is to lay an action on...
Correct.
...getting to the contract.
Correct.
Yeah.
We need information.
The rules, the rules of the contract.
Correct, yeah, you can, you can close out the public hearing, you've had the public hearing on the mortgage. Then it's a matter of, you'd accept the plans, but then you...
Well, no, because we don't, we've never seen the plans. All we have is a piece of paper saying how much money you want to spend.
You, you still have a public hearing. It's the next action item that you just table till the eleventh of November. Is there any potential problem with, uh, bids not being accepted?
Um...
Always that problem.
Yeah, I mean, we can reach out. I, since the work is next year, I don't see them having an issue with that, because they know they're gonna wait. It was in these documents that they're gonna wait until the storm sewer project's done, then they're coming in and doing the paving. So it was already set up that this was gonna follow the storm sewer project.
Well, we should have had the storm, storm sewer stuff first, and then...
Well, the paving wasn't gonna change because of the storm.
Yeah, yeah.
So...
You guys, this is just a question on your process.
Sure.
Do you post it on a public site somewhere like?
Yeah, it goes on Iowa League and Master Builders, all of them.
Construction Connect, that kind of stuff, or you're not?
By law, those are the two. You have to post it on the two. Um, we can post it on as many as we want.
And then you follow up with, so, just to make sure you're getting some, some...
Like on the paving one, I worked with all these guys, so actually, before it was it, when it was advertised, we went ahead and sent the plans and specs out to these guys, so we didn't wait for them to call in to get the plans. We sent them out. And there'll be another group of guys that we, contractors, that we'll send the next plan set out to, and they'll have them before...
So then the next thing is, when we had a water line put in, we contracted it out to a major contractor, and then some hokey guys from Panora, Iowa came in with some ride tag stuff and, and did all the work. So, and do we, uh, is that something that we need to put in the contracts, that if you have the contract, we are expecting Mackinich to come in and do it if they accept our bid? Or are you gonna farm it out to Joe and Moe's, uh, excavating out of Panora, Iowa?
Right, yeah, I guess I haven't, I personally haven't had that happen, or they've done that, um...
That's the disadvantage of a public bid.
Well, well, and that's, that's what happens when it's a small venue that they're gonna deal with. I get it, but when you're expecting them yellow and, and black machine, nice stuff, uh, nice-looking guys that are respectful and everything rolling through down with nice equipment, and then ride tag comes in, you're, you're...
Yeah, I don't know if sometimes, sometimes those guys will own a company like that, um, so whether they're doing the work themselves or it's a, an associated business, uh, we've had that happen before, but, um, it's pretty rare. That was shorty whole brick that didn't tell me when it did a whole water line, water mains. You've probably heard of it before.
Yep.
He's actually a contractor with Mackinich, does the whole stuff.
Yeah.
But on this road thing here, I can't imagine there being too many variations. I think we ought to approve it, and get our plans. If we gotta change something, we can change it at the next meeting, but we need to move forward on our financing, get that going, get that approved. If we need to change it, we can. Yeah, like I said, there's already, on that hundred and eighty-four thousand, there's probably between fifteen and twenty thousand that's our number two. Yeah. So I mean, the real number you're dealing with is somewhere just under a hundred and seventy thousand. Right. Which will add to the cushion they have on the storm sewer. Right.
On top of that, they anticipated was like around two hundred and one thousand.
Yeah.
So the bid already came in close to twenty under, so we're, we're looking at four UVA cushion, close to.
So the original estimate was two twenty-five, one eighty-four, so that's a, that's a pretty good...
The bidding environment right now is, it's really good for municipalities, where a lot of people are trying to get things out on the street to take advantage of that. I'm sure you guys have a crush on the... Okay, uh, we've got a motion. We got a second, and I'll, I'll call a question. On paper, moving forward with resolution twenty twenty-four days zero one eight, uh, roll call.
Andreas.
I, I'm sorry, just procedurally, I didn't hear the second. I heard the motion. I didn't hear the second.
The second, we had a second, I made a motion, we had a second. Now we're voting, moving forward. We need more adjustments, we can make adjustments.
Fair enough. Uh, I'll vote aye.
I think we should wait, so, no?
Oh, aye.
No.
Aye. No. Aye, passes three, three two. Okay, move on to the next one. Okay, resolution twenty twenty-four days zero nineteen. You have that one in front of you. Uh, it's a resolution awarding a contract for the street improvements project. Uh, do we have a motion to, uh, proceed on agreement, twenty twenty-four days zero one...
Uh, do I have a motion to, uh, proceed on agreement, twenty twenty-four, day zero one nine?
What's the resolution?
The nineteen, aren't they?
It's on the back, there.
On the base, twenty twenty-four, day zero one nine, it is, uh, roll call. So does that have a motion? I'll make a motion.
It's on the back.
It's on the back.
Alright, so, do you have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, discussion?
So this is awarding the contract.
Yeah, that's, I'm confused.
So I am, that's, that's the whole, that's the whole, that's my, this was to do it, this is to award... I don't, I don't understand why we have to have so many resolutions to move forward with the worst time.
The first resolution was approving, uh... Yeah, it's the TIF financing, and they go through a series of steps where you have the public hearing. You accept the, you approve the plans and specs.
But we never seen the contract.
Well, sadly, Perry, we're on that house, just to prove it. So now, we approve, we approve...
It don't matter, man.
So I, I get, I get...
Well, you might as well look through them.
We approved the plans and specs, now we're approving the contract.
Correct.
I, I get, thank you, yeah, I get it.
One of the emails I did get from Amy Devore said, you don't actually have to award the bid for the contract for tonight, you can do it in November. And I do have all the bids right here, I received them tonight from Eastern...
Who are you awarded to, it doesn't say here, does it?
No, because at, at the time that I got this, I didn't know, it was forced, we're still reviewing them. So it'll have to be like, I'll have to change the wording on it.
And insert a name or a contract.
Right, right.
So...
So we can wait on this one?
Yes.
But we couldn't wait on the other one, cause we can't do the other until we do this one. I just, I, I understand, I notice, I understand...
I want everybody to, to know, this is the...
Let me finish, let me finish. I understand the process, because I know there's steps and steps and steps to do. Cause I have to go through steps and steps and steps to do what I do, and I get that. It's just, these are just slightly different than what I'm used to, so, but I, I understand, I understand the generality of it.
And, and the only thing that I would add is, this is the biggest project in the history of Alman.
I'm thinking of that as a water claim.
Well, it, I don't, it was only about four thousand.
It was, I believe this is gonna be...
But this is a, this is a big project, and this is the first time that we, we have the, uh, the TIF attorneys and the financing and everything. And so we're kind of following their lead through Jim, and Jim is reviewing everything. That's why we've got Vistrick and Kim on board. I think we have three different entities that are advising us and guiding us on this project. And it's, yeah, it's, it's the first time, it's, it's gonna be a little, little shaky.
Why can't we be, why can't we get the paperwork, so we can look at it?
Well, we're kind of under time constraints, and, and like you said, you, you got to the paper, but you haven't read any of your stuff because you're busy working.
Well, two days' notice, if, if I had three weeks, I can be in there and do it.
We're under a, a time constraint for, for the December first dispersal of, of the TIF money, and we're, we're trying, and, and we've been advised. Uh, you know, we're, we're following, uh, uh, our advice from our attorneys and from our, uh, financial people. And so, you know, cut us a little bit of slack, nothing's going to be absolutely perfect. But we will try to get you as much information as we get. Like I said, it just came in, uh, you know, we've got a meeting next Monday, and we'll have all that stuff ready for you to go. But as far as putting all of the things in, in perspective here, and, and going step by step by step as we've been advised by Vistrick and Kim, and our lawyer, and, uh...
Dorsey.
Dorsey Whitney Law Firm, uh, you know, we've gotta have some trust here, we gotta work together.
Okay, I agree one hundred percent of what you just said. But on the work side of that, is we're still the ones that are making the decisions, so we have to feel comfortable about making that decision. And the way we do that is we conversate and we talk and we ask questions.
We're informed, we have the paperwork.
And...
So, um, is there any... To the resolution twenty twenty-four, day zero nineteen, we've got a motion, we've got a second. We've, we still have any discussions here?
I need a paperwork.
Okay, I'll wait till next Monday? Do you wanna, we wanna push it till Monday? Is that, and that will be safe as far as our, our deals?
We can't push it till Monday, that's not, that's not a, that's a council meeting, that's just a work session.
Table it till November eleven.
You wanna, and, and we'll be safe in our progression, right, Jim?
I guess I'm not sure why we're tableing it, since we just approved...
I, I think, you know, we should just, we should just approve it.
Cause all it's, all it's nineteen is doing is accepting a bid.
It's accepting the bid that we...
What bid, which bid?
The lowest.
Worst, the lowest bid.
The lowest bid.
Yeah.
Lowest response, I think.
Yeah.
Right, and we gave Dan Rhodes, I don't think we've had problems with him.
No, we, we worked with them before, and we have. It, it's, your, your recommendation is to proceed.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, and they work for us, so, okay, let's have a roll call. Aye.
Andreas.
Well, or Scott, but, aye, yes, no, uh, no. Okay, Perry?
Nope, I need paperwork, I need to look at... Our names are what's being down there, we get, we're the vote. We need to be informed, we need paperwork, we need all that stuff.
So were you not here, Perry, when they were here and showed us all the specifications? We all came up with what we wanted to do.
That can be all changed, now they've accepted, I need the accepted bid, is that what we're getting, the same thing?
I don't think we went over all of the specs and the drawings and the...
The inlets, where the inlets were going, in the roads, all that, I don't think we seen...
No, that was, that was, that's a secondary, yeah, that's a secondary effect.
But even, even this...
The first one is the mill and overlay of the street.
Yeah, but now we're taking pipes through roads, we're gonna take that out, and... So where's all this happening? So now we're, we're going through roads, and we're having compaction tests, and we're just laying over...
So aiming would occur after the storm sewer project.
Right.
So all of that work will need specs before you would ever have the new debate.
So there's, there's not gonna be any variance in, in that loop?
Maybe specs and the acceptance, maybe this will help.
We're accepting overlay first, but we're gonna do that part of the project last.
I, I get it.
So all the stuff is getting done, so we won't have to go in and cut trenches and...
No, I, I get it, but...
Right.
Where we cut out the pipe and stuff, is that gonna be the same thickness as the regular overlay? How are we doing...
No, we're actually making, that'll be something that's thicker, so it'll be all concrete up to the old surface, when they come through and mill, and they'll remove just that top two inches of the concrete falling down below and remaining.
And, and that is...
And you'll get a new surface over the top.
And that's specified in the...
It'll get in the plans.
In the water and, of the pipe.
In the, correct, in the storm sewer side, correct. And that would be the plans that you'll go through next Monday.
I, I remember us talking about this, with the, like, when we were talking about cost and what we were gonna do, and why we're gonna do what we're gonna do, I remember, we were talking...
I remember all of that stuff.
Right, yeah.
We just didn't ever look at that set of plans, that's the point.
If this is what you're accepting, what this paper is, it's not that you...
That's all, that's all we just accepted.
Love, somebody here.
Right, but at the end of the day, if I understand this all correctly, is, is that we need to, to go through the motion of, of agreeing, yes, we're going to do this, yes, we're going to borrow the money, yes, this is the contractor we're going to use. From there, then, we make sure that what they're doing, the engineers, are doing it properly. It's our job to oversee that, that, that what we're asking them to do is being done the way we want it done. If, if that happens later, do I understand this correctly?
Right, sure you can have, be okay with it.
We've, whoever showed up, just do what they're gonna do.
And there, there is, and I, I told Scott this, I, I trust what they're doing.
We just counsel people to make sure they did what they were supposed to do.
We, we as a group have, really got this, that review of those for the...
Scott? Sure, call a question? When you say yes or no, I get your name, if, if I remember the question correctly, I will vote aye, okay? Okay, let's move on. I can move.
Passed or no?
Yes.
Yes, it passed. Set of the eighteen passed, nineteen passed. Well, there, it's right there.
Probably have to do six, seven, eight, okay?
Twenty, twenty-four seventeen? Program, uh, the next, the next one is twenty twenty-four, dash, zero one seven, seventeen. Resolutions provide for a notice of hearing on proposal, proposed plans, specifications, form of contract and estimate cost for the storm drainage improvement project and, and the taking of the bids therefore. And you can read there, uh, section, what?
December month.
Section number three, November eleventh, twenty twenty-four, at seven p.m. In the council chambers of City Hall, Alman, Iowa, is hereby fixed as the time and place of the hearing on the contract documents. The foregoing date and time may be changed at the discretion of the city clerk and in compliance with the publication and requirements pursuant to Iowa law. So this is, uh, the resolution that, uh, gives us the public hearing. So I will, I will ask for, uh, I will, uh, after a motion, I'll make a motion, and do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, and discussion, we're open for discussion right now, and then we'll have a vote.
And this is the motion just to have the public hearing.
Yeah.
For the, okay, that's starting to get into...
Are proposed lands.
Yeah, it's going.
So we're all gonna look at it next week.
Correct.
Okay, let's go.
I'm ready.
Okay, uh, with that, uh, I'll call, call a question, uh, roll call.
Mr. Andreas.
Aye.
Mr. Rosalind.
Aye.
This is, hi.
Yes. It's all up to Smell?
Okay.
You gotta be, you gotta do things properly.
Okay, there you go. And now we'll move to, uh, two.
Twenty-one, twenty-two.
Twenty-two, it's a public hearing, two...
Okay, item number twenty twenty-four, day twenty, uh, zero two-two. Resolution setting a date for the public hearing on a proposal to enter into a general obligation in corporate purpose loan agreement and to borrow money thereunder in principle an amount not to exceed eight hundred thousand dollars. An authorizing term sheet and setting date for selection of the lender.
Under section one, it's November?
Under section one, uh, it would be, uh, the city council shall meet on November eleventh, twenty twenty-four, at the City Hall in Alman, Iowa, at seven o'clock. At which time, place, a hearing will be held, and proceedings will be instituted and the action taken to enter into the loan agreement described in the preamble of the air, of the here, hereup. So do I have a motion?
Make a motion.
I have a second.
This motion is just to prove the resolution setting a time and date for us to discuss this.
Right, yes, of a hearing.
Second, do I get a hard second there?
Scotty.
Scotty, thank you.
Okay, and the discussion, any discussion?
Okay, hearing, hold on, I have, I, it's all, hold on, sorry, Bob, I really, I really am... So, we have to have a hearing separate from this meeting, right? So we have a hearing, that's done, then we have this meeting, then we have our board meeting. Is that, is that how we do that?
Right, certainly we're opening as a public hearing.
We open it as a public hearing, then we close the public hearing, and then we go into our regulars. Yeah, regulars, council. We didn't do that tonight, for record, for our public hearings, that's why I'm asking.
I've been looking at other cities, and that doesn't seem to be the practice. I've been asking other clerks, and they just put them on their agenda, they don't open and close. We can do it however you guys would like to do it.
I just wanna do it the right way, that's, that's, that's the only reason I'm asking. I'm not saying, I'm not saying we did it wrong.
That's why we talked to other cities, cause I wanted to be clear to you, and there was no clear answer.
Okay.
It's kinda weird, is it, the city council has a public hearing itself?
No, I get that, but every other time, I remember we'd sit here for...
I have thought the same thing, too.
Ten minutes waiting for the public to have the...
The gap in between when you shut down and go, but other cities are, we just put them on our agenda, no, we have stuff, so...
Well, and when we have guests here, then they know when it starts, and when you're helping them understand what we're doing up here. It, this is the way I see it, when you open and shut it.
Fair.
Okay, roll call.
Andreas.
Aye.
Rosalind.
Aye.
This is, aye. Harry?
Yes.
Warren?
Yeah, pretty good. Moving on, to, um, how we can get into the, uh, uh, we're... We're on...
I don't have any...
There, there, good.
Thank you.
No, we're gonna leave two other sets here. Okay, we will, uh, now, we're working here on the, uh, receiving file minutes, so the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, uh, liaison with...
There's gonna be, there's gonna be...
You're moving on from there. Uh, what do we, we, we need, uh, consider a motion to approve the resolution twenty twenty-four, day zero two zero, resolution setting the trace rates for Alman. We've talked about this, uh, a couple of times, and, uh, so I need a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, and discussion here, everybody has the rates and time?
Uh, this will do it.
This, this is my...
Yeah, we're speakers.
Last time around.
We're good.
Okay, all, all, uh, I'll call for a roll call, please.
Andreas.
Aye.
Rosalind.
Aye.
Woods.
Aye.
Smith.
Yes.
Second.
Yeah. Okay, we're curious, uh, next one is, uh, consider a motion approving, uh, twenty twenty-four, day zero two one. Resolution setting recycling rates for Alman, November first, twenty twenty-four. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Right, do I have a second?
Alright.
Okay, uh, discussion? Any discussion? No discussion, uh, roll call.
Andreas. Rosalind.
Aye.
Woods.
Aye.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, Perry? Thanks.
Yeah, thanks, sir.
Next item on the agenda is the custodial service bid, uh, uh, recommendation. You have that in, in part of you.
This is not something you have to accept, this is just following here from the work session, I've got four bids. Two are from, you know, in Alman, and two were outside of town. We have actual bids here, if anyone's interested in looking at them.
What is that, twenty dollars per hour? I mean, if it's two hundred and forty, how many hours do you suppose that? I'm just, I'm just curious if we, if we're better off to take the twenty bucks an hour versus two forty?
She did send a letter the next day, saying that she cleans for... She also cleans for city, uh, uh, what is this, Nevada? There's something else that is that she cleans for. So I don't know, I, I don't know how many hours it would take to clean this.
We're being, we're being, uh, about, was it a once a week thing, or twice a week thing, I can't...
I put it down for twice a month.
Twice a month.
What did they say they were gonna do? So you, well, some people clean definitely.
Even to that.
I clean too, but I get out a big old mop, when I clean bathrooms, and I clean with a mop.
Fasten vacuum windows and bathroom, and wipe up surfaces, and...
Was this careful moment, Miss Perry?
Yeah.
Was that?
And Perry, dry and wet mopping.
Is it? Wiping off the carpet.
Is this what they said they were gonna do, is this what the requirements are, or is it...
This is a problem, I think.
What we, yeah.
I don't know how this fits in procedurally, but, uh, when this was first drawn up, uh, I had no idea that we'd actually get any Alman residents...
Alman residents interested in this job. Uh, and I would like to discuss, at some point, if we can't tonight, maybe add it to the agenda for the next meeting, work session, uh, about, uh, some sort of incentive for local contractors. Uh, I know that you, you deal with certain municipalities and counties, uh, if you reside within that municipality, your bid is favored by a, an automatic five percent. Uh, just as a, an incentive for local people to work in the local areas.
Yes.
Um, I, I would like to sort of discuss that as being something that we might do.
Yes, I'm also less...
I think that's a good discussion, I, I would also ask that, uh, these other ones vote an hourly rate.
Okay.
And say, that way we can, that way we can just, we can...
Apples, apples.
Yeah.
I just approved with my attorney here, the bottom person, Reynolds, she's the custodian at the high school.
Yeah.
And she lives across from the school, circles back to you.
And she lives what? She lives ten months.
I can see her spending eight hours doing it every day.
Twelve a month.
Eight hours?
Well, not really, but sixty-eight hours.
I mean, let's give you, man, there's only two of them.
Huh?
There's only two of them.
There's only two rooms here.
This is tiny.
This is less than an hour, you can do this.
As they're getting work, we're in the process of getting bids from Luke Brothers to tear out the carpet and put new carpet in, so it's just a matter of vacuuming, cleaning the toilets, dusting.
So I would say, we have a discussion for what Scott wants, we have a discussion for what Scott wants, or asks, or wants, asks.
What do you guys think?
I, I don't think I have a problem, I don't have a problem doing that, but I just, I'd like to, moving forward, I'd like to just see apples, apples thing.
So you want from the lady from Ames, how long do you think it would take her?
Uh, not necessarily what they would take her, say, hey, how much, I would, I would be more interested in seeing the hourly rate from the others, I can, we can guess how much.
And ask, ask them, I think.
I would think it'd take more than two hours at, at tops, cleaning this room and that bathroom, that one.
And then we could, then we could, then we could side with the...
Yeah, I would say hourly rate type.
Ask them, you wanna ask them quartered out, a hundred rate?
Yeah.
Okay. Do that.
And then we could also discuss the, instead of, instead of...
Okay, um, that's, they handled, uh, I have no, really no, no comments. Um, we got a, a meeting, uh, Monday, uh, next Monday, and so hopefully we have some information. I'm watching two adjournments.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I have a second.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Move.
Negative.
No, negative.
Negative, okay.